Welcome to your city commission meeting. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on channel two at 6:00 PM and they're on midnight and available for your viewing pleasure on YouTube. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order with pledge allegiance followed by silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we begin the evening with proclamations. Before I read these proclamations, I have a few words I'd like to say. I've accepted these proclamations tonight because I believe in recognizing, supporting everyone who lives in our community. I understand that not everyone agrees with these proclamations, and that's okay. We all see the world very differently. But as mayor, my goal is to let everyone know that they are welcomed, that they are loved, and that they are respected, and they are valued here in our community. You don't have to share someone's beliefs, have the same color of their skin, or their lifestyles to be kind. And you don't have to understand everything to show respect. So tonight, let's build, let's build a community where we can show up as ourselves and still get along. And please, let's keep the first city first. First up is my buddy Joe. Come on, come on, you're first. Yes, you get to come on up here. You can stand right here and look pretty. Okay, thank you. So this proclamation is to celebrate the 2025 celebration of Juneteenth. So whereas on January 1st, 1863, President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation freeing all persons held as slaves in the Confederate State. And whereas when Union troops entered Galveston Bay, Texas on June 19th, 1865, the enslaved black people of Galveston, Texas finally learned that they had been freed for two years. And whereas, June 19th became the recognized day of celebration and called Juneteenth, or Freedom Day, by the former enslaved people of Galveston, Texas. And whereas, the newly freed people began to migrate to other parts of the country, they shared their celebration of Juneteenth in the new black communities, and the celebration has spread throughout the country. Juneteenth is a day of grave remembrance of dark period of our nation's history. It's also a day of recognition of hope for the descendants of the black people who served enslavement. And our country continues to heal the recognition of Juneteenth as federal holiday, renews hope that our country's promise of freedom and equality for all Americans can come true. And whereas, the country continues to heal the recognition of Juneteenth as a federal holiday, renews hope that the country's promise of freedom and equality for all Americans can come true. And whereas, the citizens of Leavenworth, Kansas will gather on June 14th to celebrate Juneteenth with a parade and a festival because sharing traditions with fellow community members creates strong bonds and transcends differences. Amen, right? Therefore, I Holly Pittman, Mayor of City of Leavenworth, hereby congratulate and recognize the 2025th celebration of Juneteenth.
Well, my name is Joseph Clark, and I serve as the recently elected president of the Leavenworth Branch 4036 of National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, commonly and affectionately known as NAACP. I accept this proclamation on behalf of the Leavenworth Branch of NAACP, and you see many of the members right here. And we deeply appreciate the recognition of this most significant day by the city of Leavenworth and its communities. Juneteenth cited in this proclamation is a day to commemorate the emancipation of enslaved people in Texas and is considered the longest-running African-American holiday. Although the Emancipation Proclamation was written and signed in 1863, Union soldiers did not arrive until Galveston, Texas, until June 19th in 1865 to inform enslaved people of their freedom. Juneteenth was made a federal holiday in 2021, and we celebrate this holiday locally with parade, food, festival, and other community events. Many businesses and organizations and individuals and household recognize the significance and have contributed to the success of this community event. And this proclamation of the city of Leavenworth and its administration is in keeping with the beliefs embodied in the Constitution of the United States of America in support of democracy, dignity, and freedom, adding to this equality. I will not belabor this gathering with how important and significant this proclamation is, but summarize it. It takes teamwork to make the dream work. That dream that Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King shared with us at the steps of the Lincoln Memorial in Washington, DC. Rather, I will close with this. NAACP is not just a black, or brown, or redskin, or any other color organization. The National Association for the Advancement of Colored People and the celebration of Juneteenth is an all-hands-on-deck organization. White is a color too. We're going to be celebrating Juneteenth. I think we're going to start with the parade from this building at, what is it, 6:30? 6:30. We're going to march a parade down to the Haymarket Square, where they will have set up food vendors, entertainment. We'll probably meet the mayor there again, and a few other things to have a couple of words to encourage and to kick off this great celebration. As I said earlier, there are many people in our community that went into this celebration or making this thing very impossible, and we expect to see you all there at the celebration.
All right, next step. Proclamation, the city of Leavenworth is friendly and welcome, okay, proclamation is Pride Month. Whereas, the city of Leavenworth is a friendly and welcoming community that celebrates smotes and recognizes the importance of diversity, equality, and inclusion. And whereas, the city of Leavenworth is dedicated to fostering acceptance of all its residents and preventing discrimination and mistreatment. And whereas, the city of Leavenworth is strengthened by the thrives upon the rich diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, and gender identities of its residents. And whereas, the city of Leavenworth is dedicated to honoring the experiences, contributions, and rights of LGBTQ individuals. And whereas, the city of Leavenworth reaffirms our commitment to fostering an inclusive environment where everyone can live authentically and freely. Now therefore, I Holly Pittman, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas proclaim June 25th to be Pride Month.
Thank you. I just have a few words to the mayor and commissioners. Thank you. My name is Logan Panetto, and I'm an organizer with Leavenworth Family Pride. I just want to express my sincere appreciation for recognizing Pride Month here in Leavenworth. I was born and raised in Leavenworth, and I have spent my 32 years here. For the local alphabet residents such as myself, this month is one of openly sharing joy and visibility. Even small acts of visibility, like a proclamation, can have a powerful impact. Leavenworth is our home. We have family and friends here. We raise our children here. We shop at the same grocery stores, go to PTA meetings, and even attend church. As Leavenworthians, it's fair to say we don't agree on everything, but we are all still neighbors and proud to call Leavenworth our home. Thank you again for this proclamation, and I wish everyone a wonderful summer.
All right, the best for last. National Go Skateboarding Day! All right, National Go Skateboarding Day. Whereas, June 21st, 25 is Go Skateboarding Day. And whereas, Go Skateboarding Day is an annual promotional event organized by the International Association of Skateboard Companies. It began as the All-Star City Skate Jam held in Colonel Roach and Brian Chin in 2002 in New York City, and it grew, and it was named Go Skateboarding Day in 2004. And whereas, while it doesn't start off with a bang, it grew in years. In the first year, 2004, there were only a handful of events, while now, Go Skateboarding Day is an international day of skating. It is celebrated in many major cities and towns across the world. And whereas, it is fitting that we join the national and local groups to express our strong support for National Go Skateboarding Day and initiatives to promote healthy activities for communities. Now therefore, I Holly Pittman, Mayor of the Leavenworth, Kansas, hereby proclaim June 21st as National Go Skateboarding Day!
So we'd like to thank everybody for this. We really appreciate it. And we're having a Go Skateboarding Day event at the skate park at 6:00 PM on June 21st. If anybody would like to come and support us.
Jermaine's going to be there. He's going to do.
I got you, I got you.
An ollie, do you pop an ollie?
Yep.
Yes.
And we just want to hope everybody supports us in our journey to help get lights for the skate park.
All right, let's start with old business. We'll begin with the minutes from the May 27th, 2025 regular meeting. If I can just get a motion?
I move that we accept the minutes from the, where is it? The May 27th, 2025, City Commission Regular Meeting.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Hingla.
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes. All right, we're up to second consideration of ordinances. Looks like we've got two tonight.
The first one is presented by City Clerk Sarah Bodensider. Madam Mayor and Commissioners, the ordinance before you is to rescind five special use permits where the property owners or special use operators have advised staff that they're no longer operating and as such have not renewed their special use permits. There have been no changes to the ordinance and no comments were received since first consideration on May 27th. So before you is ordinance 8263. That's presented for second consideration and requires a roll call vote.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
No questions.
Hasn't changed.
So do we just do, do we have to do a motion for it, or just a roll call vote? Okay. All right, we'll begin the roll call vote, voting with Commissioner Martin.
Commissioner Martin, aye.
Bowder, aye.
Pittman, aye.
Wilson, aye.
Commissioner Hingla, aye.
All right, motion passes 5-0. All right, next up, you'll have to.
Yes, due to conflict of interest, I'm going to rescue myself from this particular item.
I don't know if there's any seats out there for you. All right.
Mayor, this is actually Resolution 8264. It is correct in your agenda packet. It's just, I'm sorry, it's incorrect in the, on the agenda.
Oh, on the agenda, okay.
Incorrectly, but the resolution that you, the second consideration ordinance that you have is correct.
It's 8264, right?
8264, is that what I said?
Yeah, it's 8244 in here, but it's 82.
That's correct. So this is the second consideration for the special use permit for an in-home daycare. There's been no questions or comments since the first consideration. It was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, and it's for your consideration for approval tonight.
Everything okay? Okay. All right, does the commission have any questions about the ordinance 8264?
None.
None?
None.
All right. With that, this is roll call vote. We'll begin voting with Commissioner Hingla.
Commissioner Hingla, aye.
Pittman, aye.
Bowder, aye.
Martin, aye.
All right, motion carries 4-0. All right, we're on to new business. First up is public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. In the interest of time, we ask that groups wanting to speak limit their public comment to one presenter. This is an opportunity for the city commission to hear your thoughts of the public prior to contacting official city business. The mayor, the city commission, and the city's staff have been asked not to respond to those giving public comment, and action may not be taken by the commission on public comment items. The mayor may direct staff to follow up the specific individuals after meeting. When speaking, please state your name and your address. A sign-up sheet has been provided in the commission chambers for anyone who has wished to speak. Is it anyone signed up, Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, let's start.
First up, we have Mike Steven.
All right. Hello and welcome.
Hello, thank you. My name's Mike Steven. I'm Leavenworth County Commissioner from the southern part of the county, 19020-252nd Street. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you folks tonight. I appreciate it. Appreciate the chance to work with you in the future on many issues. At church on Sunday, I was brought up to speed on some of the events and the folks are interested in. And one of the things they talked to me about was the proclamation that we just dealt with. So I wanted to address a couple of concerns that I have on this issue. First of all, let me address the issue that's not really the issue. But the issue of bringing this Pride proclamation before us, to me, the most disturbing part of it is how it is divisive and it divides our community. This is not an issue that we needed to bring forward now. It's not an issue that causes unity in the community. It's an issue that divides us. We need to work on issues that unite us and bring us together. It serves no purpose to bring this ordinance, this proclamation forth, except to state one political position which is driven by a political agenda, primarily part of the Democratic Party. Now, that being said, I, I think the most important thing to say to everyone is, we should all have respect, and we should all love each other and believe each other's right to have differences of opinion on this and many, many other issues. And that's why I'm concerned. I don't want straight, gay, transgender, parents' rights groups, all divided. But I feel like an agenda's being pushed here in Leavenworth. And one evidence of that was the fact that I was given pictures from the public library in the children's department, the books on display. And they are very much orientated in favor, in favor of the agenda, the agenda. Now, when I was a kid, we read The Hardy Boys. We read Nancy Drew. We read Batman. We read, we read books that carried traditional values. We did not try to push a certain sexual agenda or value system on our children that are three, four, and five years old. So I do not, it's my turn, it's my turn. So, so the.
Please.
I'm just expressing my concern that an agenda's being pushed, and I don't want an agenda to be pushed. I want us to work together. I want us to have unity. And to do that, we need to talk about these issues. We need to discuss these issues. And we need to sit down and just have a cup of coffee and realize that we have differences, but maybe there's a bridge that we can pass to find a point where those differences can be met, where the.
Apologize, bear the time is up. Okay, the time is up, I'm sorry.
Both concerns can be met. Thank you.
Thank you, first.
Up next is Vanessa Reed.
Thank you for having me tonight. I have concerns about how these meetings are being conducted. Public comment should take place before the proclamations, ensuring that the city commissioners have the opportunity to hear public input relevant to the proclamations before proceeding. Handling proclamations in this manner says to the community that we do not value our comments. It seems that the proclamations being presented reflect the personal priorities of the mayor and the minority, rather than representing the collective interests of the city as a whole. One cannot issue a broad proclamation of this nature without indirectly endorsing contentious issues that bring about division and hate. It is deeply disappointing to witness individuals who publicly identify with Christianity to fail to uphold the teachings and principles of scripture in their decision-making. There are at least three individuals currently serving on the city commission who profess their faith, and I urge you to stand firm on scripture and reject this Pride proclamation from our city. Too often, scripture is cherry picked or misquoted. I implore you to exemplify two strengths in faith. Your actions in this matter hold significant weight and reflect not only on your personal beliefs, but also on the values of the community that you represent. Where was this proclamation when a group rented the Haymarket Square and posted a sign at the entrance banning not only myself, but also Representative Proctor? Such actions directly contradict your statement that this city fosters acceptance while preventing mistreatment and discrimination. Instead, this incident highlights a troubling inconsistency between the proclaimed values of our community and the realities faced by some of its members. It is imperative that we hold ourselves accountable to ensure that the ideals of inclusion and fairness are truly reflected in our policies and our actions. Only then can we genuinely advance toward a community where all individuals feel valued and respected. I stand here before you today, as a child of the one true king, saved by grace alone, speaking so that you may know the truth, and that the truth may set you free. Love is not hate, and it is essential to remember that true love is a powerful force, and ultimately will prevail. May we strive to uphold grace, compassion, and unity as a reminder of the values that make our community strong. Thank you.
Next up, we have Ruben Gonzalez.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Sir, can you state your name and your address?
Ruben Gonzalez, 1205 Augusta Drive. So I pastor a church here in Leavenworth. I've been pastoring for five years here in Leavenworth. Love this city. I'm not from this city, but I have a heart for this city. I've seen broken people come to God. I've seen people lost, addicted. We love all types of people. A sin is a sin. We love all types of hurt and broken people. But what I am saying is, I've seen the plague on this city. I've sat down with young teenagers that want to commit suicide. I've seen marriages go into the pit. And I've seen brokenness in this city. And we have a heart, we are praying for this city. And one thing we can't forget is that this country is founded on God, and this is the first city of Kansas. And I'm telling you, we cannot expect God's sovereign grace on this city when we are allowing and celebrating, not just allowing, celebrating what's against the Bible. We're celebrating it. There's people that died, and soldiers, and military, and policemen, that they don't get whole months celebrated like this. But we're celebrating just because we want to be okay with culture. Just like the other brother said, man, there's this perversion. We're celebrating perversion. I'm not saying we don't love them. My old sin before I got saved was the same as someone that's gay, but you don't go celebrate drugs all over the place because I was a drug addict before Jesus saved me. And Jesus can save people that are homosexuals. Jesus loves them and has a plan for their life, but we shouldn't celebrate them and expect God to move in this city. I'm telling you, we need Jesus in Leavenworth. Can't you look around and see, see what's happening in our city? Brokenness, hurt, bondage, drug addiction, fentanyl. We're not going to win this city by celebrating something that's anti-God. All right? So we're going to pray for the city. We're going to love you. If you wonder what church I go to, you can come by and say whatever. Care Church on Cherokee, we love you. We'll love you. You can come anywhere you are to our church. We don't, we're not going to sit there and lie to you. If there's a house on fire, we're going to say, your house is on fire, get out. We're not going to just wave to you and let you burn. We love you.
Next up is Debbie Cowans.
Debbie Cowens.
Sorry.
From, that's okay, 528 Chestnut, Leavenworth. I'm actually going to read a letter that former state representative Tony Barton sent to us. Today I stand with these pastors, and I am writing to express my strong opposition to the proposed proclamation that you are considering signing in honor of Pride Month. I would be present, but I'm unavailable because of a death in the family. I would like to inquire about the specific rights that the Pride community does not possess under the Constitution. The answer is none. They have the same rights under the Constitution as any other U.S. citizen. Additionally, I would like to know if there have been any instances where the Pride community has faced abuses or violations of civil rights under the Constitution. The answer is no. And the irony is the signing of the proclamation that celebrates the community for the entire month of June. Despite these facts, the City Commission of Leavenworth has decided to honor Pride Month with a proclamation signed by Mayor Holly Pittman and supported by the City Commission. In comparison, I would like to point out that no U.S. president has ever received such an honor, a month celebrating their accomplishments. Similarly, veterans of our military services have not ever received a month to be distinguished for their accomplishments. Additionally, our law enforcement officers, first responders, and correction officers have never been given a month to honor them for their accomplishments. No branch of our military has ever been given a month as celebration of their accomplishments. And if you are not aware, these are people who actually put their lives on the line every day. In contrast, I would like to ask if there are any accomplishments of the LGBTQ and community that are deserving of a day, let alone a month, to be celebrated. The answer is no. Despite the lack of deserving accomplishments, the City Commission of Leavenworth has decided to honor Pride Month with a proclamation. I believe that this decision is absurd and offensive. I believe that this decision is absurd and offensive and I urge you to reconsider. Sincerely, Tony Barton, former state representative, 41st district and citizen of Leavenworth. Thank you.
Next up, we have Bethany Gonzalez.
Hi, I'm Bethany Gonzalez. My address is 12508 Augusta Drive.
Is that in Leavenworth?
In Kansas. Let's ask ourselves what the benefit of celebrating an entire month of pride does for the community. Because statistics say that the LGBTQ plus community individuals experience higher rates of mental challenges compared to their heterosexual and cisgender peers, which include increased rates of depression, anxiety, and suicidal ideation. Specific statistics show that LGBTQ plus youth are more likely to report anxiety, depression, and suicidal thoughts than their heterosexual peers. Seventy-three percent of LGBTQ plus youth experience heightened anxiety and depression. And seventy-two percent of LGBTQ plus youth reported considering suicide in the last year, including over half being transgender or non-binary youth. While promoting pride, we are supporting people who don't know their identity to make life decisions without considering their mental health, which is more damaging than inclusivity. Studies show that 10% of individuals detransition due to the change in identity or realizing that their transition didn't alleviate their gender dysmorphia. Not to mention, how is it different to preserve the minds of our children while hosting a pride parade where people go through the streets half naked or fully naked, covered in stickers and paint, exposing our children to pornography at such a young age? But instead of it being something that should be wrong, it's being celebrated and embraced, giving the impression that it's okay. I don't want to come across as a hate speech or another homophobic Christian, but we need to realize how debilitating it is to a person's mental health while seeing them go through such an obvious identity crisis. And instead of helping them find their God-given purpose and identity and God, and the God who created them to be, we're allowing people to celebrate running around in confusion. Leavenworth was the first city in Kansas. And as we claim one nation under God, we should be the first city to take a stance at keeping God's standards, not the first to diminish it to uphold society's standards. Thank you so much.
Right, next up is William, I think it says Nelson.
Nestler.
Nestler.
Hello, I'm William Nestler. My address is 1101 Tammer Street. Um, so I'm just here to question the city commission as to if there is mistreatment or there is oppression of the LGBTQ community in our city. How come instead of passing laws and bills to fix that mistreatment, how, how about, why, why are we instead celebrating them? What like, not like, that sounds, that's worded incorrectly. Why are we parading them and like, parading them through the streets and like, they're like segregating, it's basically segregation. Because, it really, it really is because, um. So are they really not celebrated the rest of the year? Do we not care about them the other 11 months? Why, why only give them one month? By giving them a month, we are therefore segregating them from the rest of the community and oppressing LGBT community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, next up is William Rogers.
William Rogers, 73rd Yacke. First off, I want to thank Ms. Reed for, uh, bringing the people together to go against this. I'm not sure what we're here going against. I'm not going to argue the Bible. I'm far not intelligent enough. I've only got a ninth grade education. A little embarrassed being Ms. Reed's elected school board official to be here. It puts a lot of pressure on me. But I'm going to talk about love tonight. And I'm going to tell you one thing, I do know that 365 times in the Bible it says, "Do not be afraid." So all these LGBT people in here, do not be afraid of them. They can't hurt us. So what I want to say is, when we talk about pride, what is pride? Is it, is it about love? Is it sex, marriage? Is it about wanting to feel independent, feel equal? What is it? What are you guys against? What are you, what are you, what are you so mad?
No, maybe a great point. I think they need a whole year.
So we'll talk about that. Anyway, I want to tell you about two, uh, very distinct love stories. Um, I want to tell you about a love story between Mildred Jeter and Richard Loving, a couple who were married in June of 1958. June, imagine that. Because they were not of the same race, the two were criminally charged and given the option of one year in jail or vacate the state of Virginia. Historically, opposition in interracial marriage was frequently based on religion. Let's talk about that. That's the historic part of this. We can't, we can't argue facts. Again, I'm not going to argue the Bible. You guys kill me on that one. In April 1967, Loving, first Virginia, was argued in the U.S. Supreme Court. Just two months later, coincidentally, again in June, the case was decided unanimously, decision legalizing interracial marriage. Nothing more than just wanting to love another of their choosing. So those two had to have a lot of courage back in 1950, the 50s, to stand up against the hate that was probably they were facing. But I want to tell you about two, two more people, another love story that you guys may find is vulgar. And I'm going to show you the picture. I hope it's okay. But, uh, I don't want to offend nobody here. So I have one more love story for you. It's a young couple that met in 1966. They fell in love and married on September 1397. The couple was Richard Baker and Michael McDonald. Ms. Reed, please don't get your panties in a bunch over that. There's a picture of them. They're still, 52 years later, they're still married. So they were the first same-sex couple to obtain a license. This was legal. It took place in the great state of Minnesota. Ultimately, same-sex marriage was legalized in 2015 with a 5-4 vote to the Supreme Court. In 2023, a New York Times poll found that 70% of Americans support same-sex marriage. The transformation of American response to homosexuality has been and continues to be one of the most rapid and sustained shifts in mass attitudes since the start of public polling. In just a few weeks, I will be married 40 years.
Sorry, Mr. Rogers, time's up. Thank you for coming. And our last one is Mike Trapp.
Thank you. Uh, I'm Mike Trapp, 707 South Broadway, Leavenworth. Um, I don't want to steal the thunder on the pride proclamation. I appreciate, um, the city of Leavenworth making this recognition. Um, you know, we're a conservative town in Leavenworth, but there is, um, embracing our most struggling citizens who face, um, you know, just discrimination on the daily. Um, sometimes it can seem, when people don't share our own views, it can seem that we're under attack and, um. But I've been, I've been involved with Leavenworth Family Pride Group. They're, they're an awesome group of folks, mostly parents supporting their kids and loving their kids. Um, I didn't sign up to talk about, um, pride because I don't think this should be controversial. Um, this is what cities do. They embrace their residents and they stand up for people who have been historically oppressed. They make right, um, things that have happened that were not right under what we were doing. Um, what I came to do again is to thank you for, um, pursuing your land use powers over special use zoning in regards to the CoreCivic facility. I want to just let you know that the community has your back. We're organizing to get more people from Leavenworth involved and to make sure that their voice is heard in these decisions. We're anticipating that you're going to be victorious and that we'll see a special use permit process. Um, to that end, um, we're meeting Thursday night, June 12th, at 6:30 in the O'Shea Conference Room at the Mother House at the Sisters of Charity, who have graciously allowed us to use their facility. We're going to have a roundtable, we're calling a roundtable discussion. It's not really like a people sitting and, and, and talking like in a, it's actually people sitting in small groups and doing some planning about how we can make sure that our voices are heard in opposition to CoreCivic. I have some signs that say, "CoreCivic, Respect Our City." If you'd like those for your front yard. If you can get a chance to hand out flyers or drive people to come to our event on Thursday night, uh, we want to support your decision to hold large corporations accountable and make sure that they're following our land use laws. Um, thank you for your bravery, your selfless service. Sitting in the face of controversy, um, a couple times a month always wins my respect. Bow to your Buddha nature. Thank you.
Anything else to say? All right, thank you. Thank you for everyone who came out and voiced your opinion. Next up is staff reports, and we're going to hear about Camp Leavenworth.
We have Kelly O'Neil Wenzel from O'Neil Events and Management, who provide the updates and I'm available to answer questions.
Hi, Kelly.
Hi.
Hi, you came on a fun night.
Lot of energy in the room.
Lot of energy.
Okay, well, we will talk about Camp Leavenworth. Um, just to give you guys a, a good update, the last time, um, we met, we've made a lot of progress. Um, we've, um.
Just a second, let me wait till people exit so we can hear you. Is, is the police out there right now?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead, Kelly, I think we.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we've done a lot of outreach since the last time we met, just to try to get out in the community. A lot of things we heard from you guys on how can we keep involving more Leavenworth? How can we keep the community involved? Um, so Convention and Visitors Bureau, um, we have an advisory board that we've made up. Um, and it was the Leavenworth County Historical Society, museums, restaurants, and other organizations. So we had kind of a, sit down with a lot of them to kind of get some input and some feedback, see what they think about Camp Leavenworth. How can we change it? How can we address it? Um, uh, we were asked, you know, how can we incorporate more, um, provide more historical elements? So we kind of taken that into account as we look at some of that. After those discussions, some of the groups had their hearts set on, um, kind of a revamped Buffalo Bill days, which was one of the considerations when we first started Camp Leavenworth is bring back Leaven, uh, Buffalo Bill days. Um, we haven't heard from them, but I think there is a group that's really considering doing something like that, maybe for 2026. So, um, I think we realized, how do we change this? There might be a real good direction on the historical side on that. Um, we reached out to the Chamber and the Main, uh, Main Street to figure out how we can engage businesses. We haven't heard back from the Chamber, but we think Main Street is going to revamp the app that they started last year and kind of continue to grow that. And they continue to be part of the conversations that we meet monthly on. Um, obviously, right now you go to the website and we have launched the food trucks and the makers, um, uh, for the, the, the shopping involved there. We're happy to say that we have gotten some good feedback from food. Um, music, we're excited. We have five bands with local ties, including the Penny Black Band, which is a very popular one. Um, the Rock Gods will be Friday night with the fireworks. Um, they were last year and have some Leavenworth ties and, um, we're really popular. And then we're excited to say we're bringing in Jim Blossoms, a larger act, a well-known act with some fun opening bands. A lot of our other bands will be much more, um, more cover type bands, um, basically to help offset Jim Blossoms was a lot more expensive. But we always have great music and we're good. I think the biggest thing that we're doing, um, is really exploring our marketing. You know, marketing is something that we have to change every time. Um, we've done some things in Kansas City focused on music, the Bridge Radio Station. We're looking at other alternative radio stations and really shifting some of our dollars to some digital. One thing that we were kind of bummed about where, um, we really looked at carnivals. The fall is very, very, very popular in carnivals. And carnival business is not actually growing. It's actually getting less. It's not an easy operation, as we all know. Um, so there's very few what we'll call mid-ones. The other ones are like secured and done and it's really expensive and it's hard to get them. Um, we did find one mid-level. Um, we had to work through some paperwork and insurance and city, uh, restrictions and codes and regulations to see if that could match. We got there and we went back and they unfortunately said they booked that night, that date. So we still have an in for potentially next year, but we also have a footprint and a remodel that we think we can add in to really focus on that kind of teen and younger audience. Um, silent disco is exciting, but it could be maybe refreshed. So we're, we're exploring some of those. We're happy to say that, um, we have a pickleball tournament that we're looking at, um, which is to kind of add something. I know you have mentioned basketball or pop a shot or any of those three-on-three tournaments. Um, we are looking at a pickleball. Um, this was actually an idea that came to us from the Leavenworth High School, um, students that we heard about. Um, and so it's going to be a free tournament. Um, we'll play, um, and it'll be kind of fun. We're excited to add that in. So we're looking at that. The 5K is doing amazing. We're looking at doing, um, paperwork for a military flyover. We were set to have one a couple years ago and it got canceled, but we hope because of the weather, but we hope that will work again. And I think the biggest thing I would say is we're looking for sponsors and businesses, um, to support the festival. Um, it helps because we can grow it in different things. We can continue to add some of these things that the community is asking for. Um, but to do that, it would help get that support. So there's a lot of really creative. You can sponsor the fireworks, you could sponsor the pickleball tournament, you could sponsor whatever you'd like. We've got opportunities and that's what we're looking for. Any ideas we'd like to have come your way. Sounds good. So that's the update. I'm excited. Questions?
Well, I got to sit on the committee and they're new and great. We got some great, I pitched them with a million ideas, so I apologize.
No, it's great.
They're all in my head, but yeah, I'm really excited. Um, I think you guys are doing great. And I love the local flair, um, and the music. That's important for a lot of people. And if we can get more local vendors down there and local, um, food trucks. I know we offer a discount for local.
Yes.
For locals, so.
And I do think we have one local that came through so far for food.
So make sure that that gets out over there in YouTube land. If you're a local and you're a vendor or you have a food truck, please apply because you do get a discount. We would love to have you.
What's the, uh, what is the discount again for a local?
I'm not sure. What is the discount?
What we were doing was half of whatever we would charge an outside.
For those different things, yeah.
So I guess.
That's great. The buy-in for the, of the craft vendors. If you want to be a craft vendor, it's $50 for the table for the whole weekend.
Oh, that's not bad. No.
So I guess maybe one, one thought is, um, around that, you know, if we've got a special deal for locals, giving them kind of a time limit on when they can get that. And then after that, it opens up to half-off potentially for even outside to maybe bring more folks in.
Yeah, we definitely want more food options. We struggle at the time of year. We kind of, you know, we moved it back thinking we would get some openings on that. But, um, I think we've gotten a few more solid leads or, um, sign-ups this year. So we feel better about the food for this year. Great.
So you said you're aiming for the pickleball tournament this year?
Yeah.
Where's it going to be at?
Um, I'm working on that.
Okay.
We've got some ideas. We're thinking it might be right in the main street. Um, kind of when you came in the festival and you turned right where the merch booth was, we're thinking that whole street could be a pickleball. Because it's kind of contained, it's not in the main traffic, but it's still in the center. Um, so that's kind of where I'm thinking.
So I send the Education Foundation and we, they had asked for a grant last year to teach pickleball to, I think it was at Henry Leavenworth, to teach pickleball. And then they had like all fifth grade or, no, fourth grade had a tournament. And so they're teaching the kids. So I thought that would be really fun if you could somehow get that pickleball group to come out and.
Good exercise.
And play. So maybe have like a youth tournament and then an adult tournament.
Yeah. Yeah, it'll be interesting. I mean, got to create a court on a street, but we'll figure it out.
You can do it.
Oh, we used to draw it in the gym, so.
Right? People do it in driveways all the time. We can figure it out. We can figure it out.
They play pickleball on that gym.
There you go. Yeah, they do, right, yeah. Yeah, actually, sometimes as we're setting up.
Now, what you might do, I don't know if it's feasible, but I've been told that there is a professional pickleball team in Kansas City.
Oh.
Maybe get them to come up and do a demonstration.
That would be fun.
That's fun.
Here's what professional pickleball is like, you know, and-
It's getting pretty serious now.
Well, you can sell that to them as, you know, hey, you may gain some people who want to come down and watch and get paid for it.
Right, there we go.
I don't know if that's feasible, like I said, but-
At least it's worth looking into.
Another thing that emphasized on the committee, and they're doing a great job, is getting the downtown businesses involved. So, we were looking at some ideas, how to get people from Camp Leavenworth to our downtown. I think we've got some great ideas for that. And then getting our hotels involved. We haven't really done that in the past, so when people may be doing a weekend for Camp Leavenworth, a weekend package, and then when they check in, give them a packet about Camp Leavenworth, the map of Leavenworth, all the downtown businesses, they can put coupons in, things like that, to really get people throughout our whole town, not just down in Camp Leavenworth. So, some really great ideas. It's a really great committee.
Yeah.
As far as transportation goes, the Ride Leavenworth, that doesn't work on weekends, right?
No, but we have an idea-
But what if, yeah, I was thinking-
You remember the rickashas?
Oh.
Remember that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And they're decorated and fun, and then they can take you from the festival downtown.
Yeah.
That'd be fun.
And they're like loaded up, and they got great music playing, and we thought about that, because we did bring up-
It's how to connect downtown more with it, yeah.
We thought about Ride LV, but-
Yeah, I know you don't have that, well, the thing is, there you can get a whole bunch of people at once.
True.
And while we don't normally have them running, so we don't have the drivers, you know, but, you know, if we could get drivers, yeah, we might have to pay for that.
Yeah, I'd have to be overtime and all that, and their staffing's challenging anyway.
But that could bring a lot of people at one time and just have them rotating.
I like the rickshaw idea.
Yeah, I do too, if we can get that going.
You'd want to ride on it downtown.
Need a lot of, need to have a lot of them. I think it'd become very popular, excuse me. No, no, you're good. Last year, there was a youth talent showcase.
Yeah.
What was the feedback on that?
Um, we had a really hard time getting people signed up for it, and then it just, you want to have an audience, and there wasn't much of an audience.
And that was during that storm stuff, too.
And it was a little bit during that. We had like, you know, some were really popular because the dance groups bring in more families and stuff, so it was cute, but, so we kind of said, take a pause on it this year and tried some other things that would maybe get more of the just instant community behind it, like the pickleball, like that has its built-in community in.
Yeah, the challenge with the musicians was the stage, so our breaks are when they are resetting the stage. We can't use the stage to put on some local talent, so we tried using the silent disco stage for that, but we couldn't draw people to the back of the event for that, so we did talk about whether there was some space for some local musicians to do some like street performances. They have to be sort of acoustic, so I think we're gonna reach out to some local music schools and see if that might be an option. So, still try to keep that local talent going, we just got to figure out, we don't have any really electric outlets and things like that for it.
Yeah.
Well, we got a skateboard community that's very talented, maybe they could do something.
Can we set up one of those?
Yeah, that's right.
What's that called?
A bowl?
A ball.
Demonstration, yeah.
Or a half-piper.
Yeah, half-piper.
There you go.
I knew how my kids were skateboarding.
What about merch? Oh, go ahead. Okay, what's the possibility of getting, I mean, when we have a parade out here, you know, like Veterans Day or St. Patrick's Day, just a lot of marching bands. Yeah.
Yeah.
What's the possibility, you know, let them have a battle of the bands, if you will.
It'd be kind of fun to see, like, we could get them involved. It's a hard time, you got to remember when we're at, we're like during the height of high school football and all of that, but maybe something in front of the run or kind of to lead and kick off that.
Something like that to get some of the-
Bands always create energy, you're right.
Yeah, they, and they all want to be told that they're the best, you know.
We went to the high school, we got some feedback from the high schoolers about some of their youth performance groups, so that was one that we were gonna reach out to again in the fall and see if that might be an option. There are some, I'll get it wrong, but I think show choir or some of those groups I hear. There's, that's what it was, some really talented groups there, so we were gonna see if maybe we could fit them in somehow to Camp Leavenworth. But we were really focusing on the main music lineup and then seeing what our available times were, how we could fit those local groups in.
Yeah, and we just secured the finalized that, so yeah, that should be able to look at some of that. And then merch to answer, I love that. We are gonna have to update and refresh. We went through a lot of it last year, so that we were kind of getting rid of some older stuff, so haven't gotten there yet.
I'm really plugging the glow stuff, that's, they sold that this weekend at the Moonlight Market, and it was a long line.
Yeah, just glow stuff.
Glow, everything was like glow bracelets, glow-
Glow stuff.
Yeah.
And Ed can still sing.
That's what he's ready to say now. We'll put you on the bus to Ed's stage.
What does the advertising look like on Fort Leavenworth?
Um, we are, you know, limited. I think at the beginning in August, there's a-
So, Pear Day.
Pear Day.
We go to Pear Day and promote, CDB goes, and then usually Christine Fritsch will go, we promote Camp Leavenworth, and we promote the 5K, which is part of Camp Leavenworth. We also work with the Spouses Club, so that's where we have the Leavenworth Spouses Club, because they're the ones that will bring in the families as they're new and get them acclimated, and we can share, hey, there's an event, and they can even volunteer and then hopefully bring their families, so that's the avenues that we've used to reach the military, which is one of the key items for the festival.
But you can't really put it in the lamp, right? Is that a rule?
So, we can pay to put it in the paper or the lamp. I know-
But there is no paper lamp anymore.
It's all online. It's all digital.
Oh, my gosh. God, I'm so old.
Well, we're doing targeted Facebook ads out there and social media.
Yeah, we really are gonna focus a little bit more on the social media and target paid, and so we just feel like that's where we need to go. It's a small, we need followers, so please follow our social handles, because the more you have followers, the more-
Can you run a contest?
Yeah, we could do a lot of things.
Like and share, comment for a free t-shirt or something. Get more followers.
Yeah, that's what we need. So, we're gonna do a lot more paid social stuff, targets audience, Jim Blossom fans, that kind of thing.
We also heard from the high school that they do not follow Facebook in any way.
No.
So, we launched TikTok and Instagram.
Come on now.
Now, let me clarify, I did not launch it, but the young one in my staff did, and we're playing with it, so awesome.
Snapchat. Are you, Penny, are you talking with the International Military Student Division? Because each of those international students, and we meet them all like next week or so, right, they all have two or three sponsors, and if you can get with their sponsors to get them to bring the international students down with their, all their families, that's, I don't know if you know anything about that. Penny can tell you all about that.
I know, Penny, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, the city does host the International Officers for the Day. We tell them about local government, and that can certainly be-
Let's get them a flyer.
-the speaking points that we mentioned, and we can have flyers available.
I was gonna say, do we have some flyers?
We do. We also, I had the chance to present to the incoming officers at their orientation, so their very first day when they're all in the auditorium, and they go through everything they need to know for the year, and they invited the city to come present, so I talked about coming to the downtown, I talked about Camp Leavenworth as a way to get them into the community.
I was told when I worked at Fort Leavenworth that it's best if you want to put something out there to go to the Spouses Club, because, because the soldiers will hear all this stuff and they won't share it. That's what I was told when I worked up there, so we focused, we focused a lot on this.
It's a matter of which member of your household is tracking all the information on the calendar.
Yeah.
We do know that they also have a separate event for families, so not sure if that would be an opportunity for the city to also welcome them.
Yeah, I agree.
And mention Camp Leavenworth.
We get a lot of great feedback from the families that do attend, like, this is such a great introduction to the city.
It doesn't have to be sexist or anything, but.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you for coming.
Great, thank you, guys.
I'm excited for Jim Blossoms.
Yeah, me too.
Hopefully, we can get a meeting and read the schedule. Thank you. All right, consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the claims for May 23, 2025, through June 5, 2025, in the amount of $2,331,339.61. Net amount for payroll number 11 effective May 30, 2025, in the amount of $443,245.19. No police and fire pension.
Second, you do that so well.
Motion made second, we'll begin voting with Commissioner Hingler.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, other, Penny, do you have anything for us?
I do have one update for tonight. The city's website has been officially changed to leavenworthks.gov. So, if you go to the old website, leavenworthks.org, it will simply redirect you to the new website. This just shows that we're an official government entity. This was done through Homeland Security CISA office. With everything going on and disinformation, it's helpful that we're recognized as an official government agency. So, you can visit the site, and you can also see the calendar of events that's going on. That includes recreation classes and other items if folks are looking to get out this summer. That's the only update I have for tonight.
All right, I'll start with you, Commissioner Hingler.
Sure, yeah, it's, summer's coming. It's not the 21st yet, but summer's coming. There's a lot of activities gonna be going on. Even this weekend, there will be a lot of activities going on. I urge you all, get out there and have some fun. Go find these activities, you know, ask Jermaine about, you can text him, he'll tell you all about lots of stuff that's going on. I'll be in it.
Yeah, live in it.
So, and God bless. I just wanted to say, God bless you, Jesus loves you all. Let us continue to remember that we are one community, so let us continue to show that Christ-like love toward one another, and Happy Father's Day to all the fathers. I know Mother's Day, they always get the shout-out, but to all the fathers they are representing for y'all, but have a great weekend. Go to the Warmest Pool, it is amazing. Me and my kids been having amazing time there, so enjoy this weekend and God bless you.
Is the water warm?
It's so, it's good.
Commissioner Martin?
Uh, yeah, I've got a few things I wanted to say here tonight, so first of all, I think, a couple of different things. I want to make sure that the, that everybody here sitting down tonight, everybody that's a resident of Leavenworth, and really in our country as a whole, as I kind of go through a few of these pieces here, is first of all, I want to make sure everybody knows, the mayor's proclamation earlier tonight about Pride Month definitely does not reflect the views of all the commission up here or the city of Leavenworth as a whole. A few things that have been on my mind lately as Mayor Pittman was getting ready to present the proclamation, I want to just kind of read here, but in the Bible, you know, Psalms 139, verses 13 and 14, says that God knit us together in our mother's womb, and we are fearfully and wonderfully made. God does not make mistakes, and we are all equal in God's eyes, bottom line. He also created us, both male and female. You know, we're up here week after week, we always usually say goodbye with, you know, God bless, we acknowledge God, and so much of what we do, in God we trust is what our money says. We say the Pledge of Allegiance every city meeting. We just started again tonight. We say, "One nation under God." We acknowledge God in everything we do, usually day in and day out in our country, but it's really become a cliche. We've forgotten what God says. We've forgotten what His Word says, that, what His Word says about marriage, and that marriage is between one man and one woman. At the end of the day, it doesn't matter what I say about the matter, it doesn't matter what Mayor Pittman says, any of the commission, anybody in the audience, it doesn't matter what we say about this whole issue. It matters what God says. And, you know, the world has its own view of what love is. God clearly outlines what love is. It is not about putting diversity first, it's about putting God first. That's all I have to say.
Okay. I have a couple of things first in response to that. I do believe that people have a right to be who they are and to love who they want, and how can you call yourself a Christian and be so judgmental and prejudiced against human beings who are different than you, and that they don't have a choice? I have family members that fall into that category, and I respect and love them, and I respect them as human beings, and they have a right to be who they want to be, and that's all I have to say on that subject. I also wanted to just say something about this time of year, we've had a lot of, I've had a lot, seen a lot of comments on social media about the vendors in the neighborhood, and I'm gonna ask Sarah to expound a little bit about on that, but I've been telling them, ask for their vendor permit that's issued by the city, and Sarah, can you add to that?
Absolutely. So, our door-to-door salespeople or solicitors that are going through knocking and trying to solicit something, sell you something, are required to obtain a city license. We issue them two forms of licenses, we issue them a paper bat, or a paper license that they are to have on their person. We tell them when they pick it up that having it in the car is not acceptable, and we also issue them a laminated lanyard badge with their picture on it, tells you the dates that they're allowed to be in town, their name and the company that they work for. Again, we reiterate to the solicitors coming through town that they are to adhere to no soliciting signs, no trespassing, leave when asked, don't be pushy, because if we get enough complaints, we will, you know, obviously act accordingly with the assistance of law enforcement. We obviously don't want anyone to feel like they are not safe or having issues getting people to leave. We keep track of who's in town and dates they're in town. We have an application process, so, and we try to empower the residents when they call, and they're not sure if someone's supposed to be here to ask for that license, they are required to show that to them. We tell our solicitors that. They ask, you are required to give it to them and show it to them. Again, you can't keep it in your car, that's not, that's not the point, and that you are required to have it. Our license does not carry over to Lansing and vice versa. Lansing's license doesn't work here, so we do try to keep our solicitors and our residents as informed as we can about soliciting in town, but a license is required by the city, and they are required to show you if you ask.
What if they don't have it? You call the police, what should they do?
Um, you can call our office, and we will coordinate with the police department typically when we have one or two in the neighborhood that go around, someone will communicate with us that, they'll give us roughly the idea, we don't necessarily need your address, but if you can give us the block and street, like, we can usually then notify PD, and they'll, you know, have an officer if they're available to kind of check the neighborhood and check in with them, because sometimes, and people will say they don't know, and that's, you know, usually that does happen, but they will check in with them and either say, well, you can stop today and go to see the city clerk's office the next day if it's after hours, or if it's on the weekend, they'll let them know that you got to pack it up till Monday.
That's pretty much what I've been, what I've been telling them, but, yeah, I ask them, you know, they say, they might say, well, my boss has the permit. No, it's not good enough, and, and so, we don't know who's checking out our house, who's scoping things out. We don't know, and that's one thing, when you call, it's easy to find out if the business is actually legitimate.
Yes, and every person who is soliciting is required to have a license, so the boss doesn't get one for the whole group, each, all five of you wanted to go door-to-door, all five of you would have a license for your person, so.
Can we make a Facebook post on that?